Counsel, let's go down the list. I think it's going to be the easiest way to do this. So, just for the record, is anyone opposed to limiting the mass gathering to the 50?
That 50, is that an outdoor event as well as an indoor event?
Mass gatherings are mass gatherings. It shows indoor. No, and outdoor.
Without, that would be outdoor confined to an outdoor space. So...
How many folks do y'all typically be here at the fishing tournament?
Oh, there's gonna be well over 100 people there. But, again, that's, the gathering is all outdoors because they're, all the fish and stuff gets laid outdoors. I can tell you it's gonna be over 100 there.
I really think if we're going to go, so this is just my thought. If we're going to do the limit of 50, I think it needs to be per event. I think we've gotta be consistent. I don't know, thoughts?
Well, and then, okay, so the golf course, when we're talking what we're gonna do about that, they're gonna have to keep a record. When 49 people come down there to play and then the 50th comes, we can't take any more than play right now until, because then you'll have 50 people in one area.
Doesn't your arms...
Well, I mean, I know that's not a mass gathering event. That's not an event.
Okay, the declaration does not prohibit gatherings of people in multiple separate enclosures. Yeah, I think it would have to limit events to 50. That's just the only way I see that you can control that. Okay, now let's look at the exceptions under number four. Again, when we adopt this, we could always come back with new information. We could call a meeting and cease it or modify it as needed. The superintendent corresponded that this week, as I said, they were on spring break. And next week, if we made it in effect for two weeks and then we reevaluated it for the school, that he was in agreement with that, that we would get through this. And he wants to work together with the council to do what is in the best interest of our city, is what I'm getting from his message. Together and with the Lord's guidance, we will get through this. That's right. I couldn't do it any other way. So that said, I think our public and private schools, we could link down in that 50. And again, we just reassess that weekly. Museums, library, we've already closed. Well, that actually falls under the direction of the city manager.
Mayor, I'd like to add.
Yes.
Is everyone okay with that? I mean, City Hall was closed today. And we just wanna be consistent of what we do with our other facilities. Same thing with community services and public works. They were closed, but our employees were there, but we weren't letting anybody in. If you guys are okay with that, we'll continue to do that. Just give some direction to you.
Okay, point taken. Counsel, any comments for Mr. Pacheco?
I agree.
Okay. Okay. Sheriff already has the jails, he already has an emergency plan implemented there. Okay, and then under four, let's read this real close, see what I have here. "In all such meetings, it is recommended that the public follow social distancing recommendations and harm reduction measures such as hand sanitizer tissue that would be provided when possible. However, in a specific large gathering space," so there's your outdoor space, "that is a part of any, well, a part of any building," included in this sub-paragraph D, "is subject to the prohibition of mass gatherings if the space holds 50 or more people." So what I'm thinking we could do on the parks and the green space, I do concur with the discussion that we've held here. It is an area the citizens could, you know, could utilize, just the open green space, confining the playscapes and play equipment. And we just utilize that verbiage that we recommend on those green space areas where 50 or more are gathered. So that can be on the dis, frisbee golf, disc golf course, that we recommend that they use social distancing in those green spaces. How about that? Okay.
And I think, could you say the same thing for your fishing tournament too? I mean, if you're talking about, because it's all outdoors.
It's outdoors if they utilize the social distancing? Okay.
I concur with that.
We concur, okay. All right. I do think that all advisory boards and commissions should be canceled unless there's, I mean, we're setting a model, so unless there's some urgent, you know, business that needs to take place, okay with that. That would include Q and A with the mayor tomorrow. I think I already had Mr. City Manager cancel that this morning. Payments, utility payments. The only other thing that comes to mind right now, do we want to consider a 30-day extension for those unable to make their utility payments this month?
Yes, I don't think that...
Want them to be able to wash their hands.
Yeah, when we're dealing with what we're doing with here, I don't think that we need to add extra verbiage to make the utilities off. We don't know. Even our habitual deals, but at the end of the 30 days, they need to pay care of it.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
When you say a 30-day extension, a 30-day extension from the actual due date, correct? Not 30-day extension from now or anything like that?
I would say from the due date.
Okay.
Is that what you were thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we requiring them to fill out paperwork or anything, or just it's a 30-day extension?
I think that would be, I would give the city manager that discretion to...
I think you want the paperwork so you can track it and make sure you know what's going on.
No, but I mean, as far as the detail of the paperwork, as far as the extension form is what I was saying.
And that's gonna be the city manager's decision to make when these individuals come in and ask for it?
Well, I think for 30...
No, we'll go ahead and do, if that's what y'all wrote on, give them a 30-day extension from the due date. So from the 10th, the bill will due on the 10th of every month, so from the 10th, give them a 30 days. But I think you were saying to give him...
It's just an extension.
Yeah.
Given on the, on a waiver.
No, 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 just allowing them that 30-day extension.
So they are going to pay the late fee still? Or...
No, I'll say no.
So wait for late fee, okay.
Yeah, sorry. I do the, I'm over the utility department. And just so y'all know, some of the, not to put it in a bad way and not to talk bad about the residents, but there's gonna be residents that are gonna be banking on what y'all decide tonight about cutoffs because typically, the March bills were due on the 10th. Of course, they accessed a late fee. And so what we're doing is 10 days from the date that I mailed the late notice, they have until that time to come and take care of their bills. So last day to pay for us is the 23rd. So they have up until that time to either pay, do an extension if they're eligible. A lot of the people that have exceeded or mailed their extensions, we don't give them another one until next year. So then you've got to keep that in mind if they're gonna be the ones banking on that, you know, extra time that y'all are giving them to pay. They've kind of already filled their extension. So typically, you're kind of, you know, I guess giving them a second chance. Just take in mind that some of these will not pay the rent and will leave us, you know, with bad debt, which we have over a million dollars in bad debt. I just had somebody not pay their bill, do an extension. They owe us like $2,000 for just a couple of months' worth of time that they've been there. Probably six months' worth of time that they've been there.
Okay, thank you, Michaela, thank you. I think, again, this is under the disaster plan. And counsel, do you have anything else to add to that? I'm just going down our list here, what we need to get in this ordinance, I mean, in this declaration.
I think to address what you're talking about is if a utility bill comes due during the, during this disaster deal, the effective date of it, whatever it is and everything, then they can look for an extension. If they're already working under a late deal, then they need to be paid. They need to bring their account current and do that. Effective of this, if that makes sense, effective of operations under this order, if they become delinquent and can't pay, then they can get a 30-day extension. And that would be it. If they're already in violation, then they need to come current.
Okay, everyone okay with that? We need to talk about the maturity date of the order. The recommendation I would make is that we make it for our next council meeting, like it's April 9. And if we need to take action prior to, that we simply call a call meeting. Is everyone okay with that? As long as I have a forum. That would include, this would include our school districts? Right. Mr. Schumacher said he would like invite me to a meeting next week. They're gonna be assessing it weekly as well. So he would keep in contact with us and just feel rest assured that we would continue to work with him. Budget for the city manager, as far as directives go for employees? If we have those that need to take off, say we have a new hire, they don't have sick leave? Is there a directive that you would like to give to the city manager in regards to the budget and how he manages staff during this emergency time?
Do you have a lot of new hires?
No. We have some that are gone in six months, but we're close to it.
Can I say something? We could allow the new employees if they have a free vacation. Only make them wait for six months until they get a vacation. So if they haven't had their six-month power, y'all could actually allow them to use that if they're sick.
No problem. No problem. Then they can be here if they're sick.
That's right, we don't...
Or maybe we're just sick if they're sick.
Yeah, we do allow, we are allowing the sick leave.
Okay. On, under the exemptions on the churches, we had some conversation. Did we want to allow the churches to exceed the 50? But in order to have that exemption, they would have to implement the social distancing of the six feet. And we do know that that would be a hardship, but it is allowing them that exemption to exceed the 50. I need direction on that, and then we'll go, I'll call for the motion.
I'm good with that, but I think we need to exempt maybe a family, you know, that comes in the door together. I don't word it, but you know, like with my son-in-law and my daughter and the two kids coming in, I'm gonna separate those four.
Okay.
Yes, back on the outdoor events, what if Pastor Lynn wants to have his congregation come? And he says, you know, because of this, we're not gonna have, they don't have a six-foot green space, I know, in their congregation for their amount of congregation.
Right.
So what if he says, okay, this Sunday, the weather permitting, we're gonna have all 150 or 200 of our congregation out on our property? And we're gonna, that's, again, it's bringing up the outdoor event.
Well, and then you have inclement weather. I think we have to be consistent. I certainly wanna worship, but I think if I allow the churches, this is just my thought. If I were to allow the churches, then I've got Ruth sitting there with Gigi's and she wants to have more than 50 in her restaurant. This is not an easy decision. You know, and the last person I would wanna put a restriction on is a church, and I make that clear. But we're going to have, Bobby, something else just resonated when you were talking about family. So I was gonna say we go with the social distancing, but you're gonna have parents that have young children. So either they have to make their choice to attend church, or, but you're not gonna put a three-year-old six feet from you. A Brother Lynn will never finish his sermon, so I'm...
I'll go back to what I said previously, you know, we're all living in the same household.
Well, I know, but when you go to the restaurant, you're all in the same household. You know, I don't know, how do we do that and not, you know, if we're going to do the 50, I just want us to have...
Thought we talked about church.
Yeah, well, right. So that exemption for the church. Do you wanna do the exemption, social distancing in church? And then add the other caveat, families can sit together, but immediate families? Then how big is my family?
Obviously we could implement it as, you know, for the city, but I would like, I wish we could exempt the worship places to let them use their own judgment. If they don't, if they wanna set their own six-foot window, they wanna do so. If they wanna have 200 people in there. If it says the religious places are exempt, I don't know why we need to implement anything on them.
What if we said, because I, the whole point is that we flatten the curve, right? So like Bobby said, he and Nancy are already cohabitating. So they've already exposed to each other. So if we said families within a household could sit together. And then you have to do social distancing between, my family's gonna be six foot from your family. Is that okay? Is that gonna work?
You're making me mad with part of the...
Okay. Okay. I mean, does that give us, that way, we're still protecting because if we're enforcing the 50, what we're trying to do is uphold the CDC's recommendation. And that is limiting gathering in places not to exceed 50 people.
Right, but it states here, because the gathering does not include places of worship. That's why...
No, this is just my draft, though. So what I was saying, but what we could do, but what we could, but it also says for social distancing, that they implement the social distancing.
We have, we have three Sundays that are in play here. And I think limiting the gatherings to 50 people for three Sundays is not gonna change somebody's way of life or whatever. We are trying to...
We're trying to do what's best for the community and limit the gathering.
For the resources that we have. If we start making exceptions and trying to figure out how to do it, then no one's gonna know what to do, period.
Right, and they're contaminating each other on Sunday, so we might as well have just had it all. This was for naught.
I just think that we have to stay consistent. I don't wanna, I'm not taking anything out of anybody's religion or anything else, but what we're dealing with here is a very severe situation for a very limited amount of time, hopefully. That's what we're trying to accomplish. And so, I have every belief in my mind that the congregations can get together and come up with a plan, whether they have to have an extra service or whether they do something. But I have ever confidence in the world they could work this out. I believe that Catholic diocese has canceled services. I think others have also. So it's just, it's just something that we have to work our way through and be consistent so that everybody understands.
Excuse me for interrupting, but, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand that. But at the same time, we have a greater mandate that we're not to forsake our assembling ourselves together.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, as Peter and the disciples said, whose law are we gonna obey? God's law or man's law? And we're kinda, I'm at the same point you're in because I also want to protect my flock.
Yes, sir.
But at the same time, I feel like that that spiritual needs are just as great as the physical needs. So, yeah, I'm not adding, I'm not helping your positions at all, I understand. But I want you to understand, where I'm coming from as a pastor, I just can't see that I'm gonna cancel my services for, you know...
I wasn't suggesting that. I'm just trying to find a compromise.
I understand.
I use the Catholic Church as an example because I received a call and said that that had happened. So if we wanna exempt the churches and let them use their own judgment and everything, then that's, then that's fine. But then, I got a fishing tournament, I got this and everything. There should be separation between church and state, so separate. That gets me off the hook. And, I mean, I don't know of any other way to address it.
I appreciate your position, and I'm not, you know, I'm not fussing that. Yeah, I'm just saying, this is how I look at it, though.
I know the litrants told me too, I think their counseling is this week, I believe. I mean, this coming, this coming Sunday. Okay, is there anything else under the exemptions?
So what did we decide for that? Are we gonna exempt the churches and let them make their own decision?
Well, I'm always gonna, let's discuss it a little bit more before I call for that. What is, what is the feeling of the majority? I'm just asking for discussion.
I know. You know, in a way, my mind, my gut tells me that, you know, you don't wanna restrict anybody from coming in to worship, but you could have, you could have guidelines, suggested guidelines in place that, you know, like if Pastor Wilson said, you know what, we all need to try to set six feet apart or whatever, for your own good and the good of the congregation. Are people gonna adhere to it? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't mean it.
You know, are we the, are we the ones that should be deciding whether or not church services should be held or aren't? You know, what the criteria should be at? It's a conundrum.
We belong to St. James Catholic Church here in Missoula. That's the San Antonio Diocese, and it was canceled. We went to Mass Saturday evening in Yocum where the case was confirmed. That's the Victoria Diocese. They chose not to shut down, so that's where we went.
No wasted decisions.
No.
How do you vote it?
Well, it would, they're gonna have to sound police. I mean, we're not going to...
Who are you gonna turn away?
Yeah.
We'll be good, I promise.
That's why, I guess, I'd go back just to say, you know, if you have the more guidelines of, you may that to your congregation, that this is what we should be doing in order to... To blood up? Yeah, you know, so, everybody should take it upon themselves to try to do that. Our service yesterday morning was down a little bit from what it normally is. But, I mean, we have some older folks that decided not to come, and I think that'll continue on.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and... Are we ready to call for a motion? Have we answered all of the questions that we have in regards to this exhibit?
I understand Mr. Blakemore's point about consistency. I just, I wish, I would like for us to make the places of worship exempt. I guess, it's just my...
I think what we could do is we could exempt the places of worship.
I mean, the time right now, that's probably the place where everybody needs to be.
And ask that, with the recommendation to implement the social distancing, how is that? That is our recommendation.
And social measures in place too. Exempt you all, but please pass the word, put some pump spray balls up the entrances and exits and leave it up to me whether I wanna go to church and be around other people on Sunday or not. Not the governing body.
Look at church and the whole lot.
That's just me.
If we look at, if we look at section, section four that we've been going through and trying to make sure that we cover everything. "For the purpose of clarity, a mass gathering does not include the following: public and private schools or places of worship." Those are areas right there that this council does not have regulatory authority.
Well, actually, we do. It's up, it's up to us to take that authority, right?
It is up to us to do that. The other things we can look at and offer some governance on that. I just, I struggle telling someone whether they can worship or not, and then where they sit. And so if we feel the need to make exemptions, then we make them in that area. And then, the leaders of those, you know, need, I think, like Bobby said, you need to explain to people that we're doing this, but in reality, we need to limit it. We need to figure it out, how you, how we interact while we're there, how we congregate while we're there to do that. We can't make the decision on everything else. If it hits out of hand, we just simply have to have another meeting or whatever, but...
Okay, so do we want to implement it on the schools?
I would not wanna put a 50-person limit on...
Okay, but the school district said they were waiting for our lead on that, and that they were... And that they were okay with, um, closing this week and next week and then reassessing weekly thereafter. If, okay, so we look, if we go back to the CDC, um, recommendation, they, it, it, it would include the schools. Now, if we wanna exempt the churches, we could exempt the churches. But what do we wanna do? Do, do we wanna halfway do it or are we going to, um, are we going to implement the, uh, the declaration? I think that's a decision we have to make, um...
Does the school board not make a decision on what they do?
They do, but as far as the mass gathering, it, it, it goes to, to this body.
All right, then I'm not gonna belabor it. If we're gonna follow CDC on everything, then let's follow them on everything. We put the fifty, they did a social distancing and that's it. That way we're consistent across the board. I'll just live by myself.
Any other thoughts? Okay, let's call for a motion, uh, on, we've, we've discussed and we discussed and, yeah. On this exhibit, do we want to, um, keep the current, uh, declaration in place with a change to maximizing, changing the maximum in mass gatherings from two fifty to fifty?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm trying to think, how do I wanna do this? So we can, I'll go through the list. Um, we're going to, I'm gonna call for a motion to, uh, reinstate the current order, the current, uh, declaration. Emergency declaration, extending it to April the ninth, which is the next council meeting. With the modification of limiting mass gatherings to fifty. And add exhibit one, as discussed, with the, uh, exception in four. To reflect, um, we'll strike, uh, the school district. We will allow the, the exception for places of worship with implementing social distancing, um, as recommended by the CDC, which is six feet. And all other portions of that, uh, that section to be adopted. And this would be for the city of Gonzales. Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion that we reinstate emergency, you know, effective through April the ninth. Uh, changing the number of the mass gathering from two fifty to fifty. And add exhibit, exhibit one as a part of our declaration. And, uh, implementing the social distancing as represented, as re, uh, recommended by the CDC.
Okay, uh, and it would apply to the school district?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so moved, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have any further discussion? Uh, I need a second, I'm sorry, I need a second.
Well, I'll second, 'cause I do have some discussion.
Okay.
What is the, um, so, what'd you say about the public schools? We, we are, are you saying that we're implementing the...
So the school district would agree to close, uh...
Up until April ninth?
So what, what, what we had discussed was it would be reassessed each week. And after, uh, the second, so they're out on spring break this week, they'll be out all week next week, then we'll reassess it. If the, if the feeling is, uh...
They'll, they'll come back to us and we can...
Yes, they wanna stay in contact with us. The superintendent's asking if we would call a special meeting, should the health advisory be lifted? Okay, that he wants to work with the council on that. He is dedicated to keeping his population safe. He told them this morning, the most important thing to him are those little children. And that if the CDC is making these recommendations, he wants to do what, what he, what the council believes or what the health advisors believe is in the best interest of this community. And that he would support that.
And that did, he did include in the motion, is I'm correct, that the worship facilities adhere to the same?
Would be, they're exempt and they are with recommended social distancing.
They're exempt.
They're, they're going to be exempt from the fifty. With the recommendation for social distancing.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding.
That's what I understood, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Look, reading through that, it talks about the mass gathering does not include the following, which is public or private school and places of worship. And then it says number two, which is museums are so, so long as visitors are generated or not within arm's length of one another. I don't think that, I'm just trying to clarify.
No, because our, our current, our current ordinance, um, but you have the authority actually to close any municipal facility.
I understand.
So do you wanna, you're just saying we need to modify that motion to strike those?
No, no, I'm talking about the first one, it just talks about the public, private schools and places of worship. They're excluded from this, uh, exhibit one. That's how I see it.
But we, but our motion was to include the school district and exempt the places of worship. So this will be modified.
Okay, my, my, my point is, why don't we let the, uh, exclude the schools as well?
Because what I had just said, if it's the, um, the, um, thank you, I am so tired. The CDC's recommendation, we're, um, we haven't achieved anything. Then we might as well just leave it where it is. Yes, that, but, but does that answer your question? But you also said the museum and the libraries are also listed over there, but we'll, you can actually direct those.
Yes, yeah, I was just talking about the, the schools and the, and the places of worship.
Right, right, but the superintendent's message was, he wants to take all the precautions that are necessary to keep his children safe and his students safe. And they will be evaluating it on a weekly basis. And, and should that, that, uh, that threshold be lifted, uh, or increased rather, then we would, we would have to call a meeting and, and change that order. If he was fine with the first two weeks and then the third week, um, would be reevaluated.
So we'll know sometime between now and April ninth, know whether that we need to put this on, something works on your end.
That's right, yeah, that's right. If we would have to call a special meeting or not. Okay, anything, anything else?
I would just like to have had some input from the school board.
Well, I got the input from what you just said, so...
Um...
I do have the county official here too, I know what, what they did and then...
Did, um, Judge, did you put a limit on your, uh, declaration?
No, I didn't put a limit on the declaration and, and, and the reason that I, I didn't initially is because, like I, I explained in there, that we're here to assist the city, all right? And I understand that, you know, the county doesn't have any functions in the county that we have in Gascoigne. We have JB Wells is here, we have, um, you know, the Expo Center and the city limits. I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, I mean, if you, I, I, like I said in the meeting today, the commissioners and all, we would back anything that you wanna say that, that you wanna do. I mean, if you wanna do fifty, you're fired, but last night, we were, the two fifty. I look at it too, which, you know, in the meeting today, we did not have any noted cases at this time, although we've had two tested in Gonzales. We don't know if they're gonna come back positive or negative, but at this time it is negative. It, it's, it's hard to make a decision because it also says in the CDC deal that it is up to the council or the commissioner's court to decide the number they want. It does not have to be fifty. Uh, fifty is a recommended number. I think that a lot of your bigger cities is, where it was initially at the two fifty because you have a larger amount of population that's there. So it's, 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 it's here nor there, I, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's a hard decision.
So I, I think, I just had a thought, Councilman Shurick. The superintendent is having conference calls weekly with the TEA. And the TEA told him, you know, whatever your, uh, whatever your city council adopts, that is what you're subject to, okay? So, and I didn't say, I don't think I clarified that earlier. That may, and I apologize, I apologize. There's been a lot, so much going on. But that is, that is what Mr. Schumacher said, the TEA told them this morning. You know, you have to, you fall subject to what, you know, your mayor and your council adopt, that is what you implement. And so he was just reassuring me to carry to the council that they would support our decision because the most important thing to them is the health and safety of those children. Now, if something changes, so he was okay with, of course, this week was already designated, next week they were off Monday, but he said they could go ahead and prolong that. If something changes, I commit to you that we'll call another meeting. Does that, does that give you confidence there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, uh, any further discussion?
Did we ever come up with what we're gonna do on the park, golf, uh, golf course?
Well, so the golf course falls under the city manager, but what, you know what we didn't do? We need to modify, um, need to modify the motion on the extension, I didn't have the extension up there. We tell the extension. Can I call?
Uh, to make the motion, I thought I said that we would extend it to...
Did you, okay, I apologize.
Yeah.
Okay, so you did say that?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? There being none, I'll call, uh, for the vote. Councilman Blatmore.
Aye.
Councilman Schrader.
Aye.
Councilman Shurick.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Gentlemen, I thank you, these are hard decisions, none of us are having, um, fun with them and our prayers with the city. And that we, we get in front of this far as sooner, sooner than later. Uh, at this time, seven...
May I make a motion adjourned?
Yes, seven thirty-nine PM, we have a motion to adjourn, we have seconds.
Thank you.
All in favor, motion, uh, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-nine.